I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council for Tuesday, July 16th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for the passing of Earl Schrader, Olivia Perez, and Alan Sterns. And when you're ready, the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
See.
And for the record, City Attorney Scott Campbell is in attendance, and Councilmember Schickling and Mayor Pro Tim LaBelle are not in attendance.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have received one written communication regarding item six tonight. The email has been provided to all the council members and is on file at the City Clerk's office.
Thank you very much. Department head reports. We're still getting a little echo here on this new machine.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Fourth of July was a big success. In fact, the trash was minimal. You could say Superintendent Jeffrey Hernandez was disappointed, although the rest of us were so happy. We only had two leaks reported that weekend, which were either fixed by the Public Works team or Edison. A few repair and restoration highlights. If you go around town, you'll see we have new water fountains, the new water bottle filling stations. We have four of them. We have another one to put in, so excited to have those in place now. The last container was set at Tremont Hall. Finally, we can close that project, which I thought was going to be easy, like I mentioned last time. So happy to have those there now. The Public Works team assisted Harbor in installing the mole flag pole. You'll see that. Also, the Public Works crew is still continuing to concentrate on Front Street with sweeping, wash downs, weeding, trimming, watering, et cetera, and that will be the big focus still continuing throughout the season. This week will be, this is the most exciting news that I have all week. We will be replacing the carpet here in council chambers this week. I am hopeful, and this shall be completed by next council meeting of replacing all, removing all the old carpet, repairing, removing the flooring, repairing the dais, removing all the chairs that would also be steam cleaned. We'll be working with the local contractor, and the Public Works crew will be removing everything and installing the carpet as well. So, that's a big project, so happy. We'll see, we'll stay tuned on that project. Finally, a full-time mechanic and two new part-time maintenance workers will be starting July 24th, and the crew, myself, everyone is just so excited to have the extra help on the weekend and at the shop. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments?
No. Fourth of July was awesome, all the way around.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
Great. No trash. Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Orin Karstarfen, Harbor Master. Since my last report Tuesday, July 2nd, patrol moored 1,081 boats for a total of 4,395 nights. Patrol warned or advised 43 individuals of municipal code violations, which included five warnings within the marine-protected areas located at Lover's Cove and Casino Dive Park. Patrol wrote six citations, responded to 10 medical calls, assisted the publics 87 times. Patrol did 153 security patrols of the facilities and surrounding waters, and assisted the Coast Guard 10 times. Any questions?
Great job on the water balloons.
Water balloons? We had one citation for a water balloon.
That's awesome. Good job.
But I think the word got out, for the most part, and I didn't get anything in writing, but I did get a lot of visual thank you for toning things down, so.
Yes, no, excellent. Thank you. Good job.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. I just want to thank my guys. I was on vacation for a couple, just under two weeks, and the captain stepped up and handled everything. I don't know what's more stressful, being here, waiting for a call, or being totally far away, but the guys stepped up, handled everything, and it made it a lot easier for me to enjoy myself. We had a hydrant leaking on Marilla that saltwater guys came out, next morning at 6:30 turned it off and repaired it, so everything went great. We're busy working out our new software. We switched to a whole new system, so everything we do is in one web-based thing. There's a web base and there's an app, and so we're, we're learning, but it's going well. And then it's just been busy, many back-to-back calls, multiple calls going on at the same time. The other day, I think we had six within the hour.
That's a lot.
That's it. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Matthew King, the Sheriff's Station Captain. Since our last council meeting, we've had 207 calls for service. We did eight traffic stops. We made four arrests, four, I'm sorry, three for drug in public, and one for domestic violence. On August 6th, we are going to have National Night Out again this year. It's usually the first Tuesday in August. Should be from 6 to 8. We'll have the search and rescue team out, and hopefully we'll have some other units as well out there. We'll see. Last Wednesday, we had Coffee with a Cop. Thank you, Mayor, for showing up. It was a small turnout, but seemed to go well, and it went smooth. Any questions?
Questions? No. Thank you. Dave, you're up.
Hello, Council, and Madam Mayor. Like everyone said, we had a very successful Fourth of July. We were quite pleased with it. I want to be able to give out some thank yous, because it truly does take a community to make an event like that happen. It's one of the reasons I love that event, is the whole community does come out for it and supports it, and it's a celebration, not just of our country, but of our community. It's truly special. It's what makes us truly special. I want to be able to thank the Commander John Wells and the Yacht Club for being our grand marshals this year. They dressed themselves up in their karts within their 20s and 30s attire, celebrating their 100 years, and we want to be able to congratulate them too for existing here 100 years and constantly and always willing to be a helpful community member. Some more thank yous. Our USC marching band for marching in a parade, giving a show on the third to our locals as well as those who are visiting. And then they came back to perform right after the fireworks, right there on the stage for USC Trojans After Dark. Big thank you to CRNR, the Yacht Club, USC Band itself, Wesley Alphen, and Catalina Island Company for helping to raise over $18,000 to offset the cost of the band coming this year. It's the most we've raised just for the band, so we're really happy about that. Big thank you to Catalina Canyon Inn for housing USC Band, as well as the El Torroto Terrace Hotel for housing the Rumble Kings, which was the band that performed onstage doing the swing music. Also, thank you to the Pancake Cottage for feeding both bands for free dinner. I mean, that's, they fed over 100 people, and on their dime. It was, they, they're always great partners. We'd like to thank Garden State and Curtin Maritime for putting on a beautiful fireworks show. Special shout-out to Curtin Maritime for donating Costa the Barge, all $35,000, back to the community programs. So, that's always a wonderful thing that they do every year. And we'd like to thank our partnership with Love Catalina and their chamber members for reaching out and getting their donations for the fireworks. And also, everybody who, private citizens who just donate and want to be a part of this and help us to kind of grow this and make it bigger and better every year. It really does take a village to make this happen, so really want to give those thank yous out this year. And like I said, the Fourth of July was a blast. Outside of that, everything's pretty much running smoothly. All our summer events are going smoothly, and we'll see what the rest of the summer holds for us.
Excellent.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say, some people complained about the fireworks, but I thought the fireworks were great. Granted, some of them didn't go real high, but they started at 9 o'clock, and for the first time ever, they ended at 9:30. I mean, they went a full 30 minutes. So, it was, and it was fun to get home and hear another boom, and, but it was, I thought they were great, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Still working out the kinks with the new AV system, but I think there's definitely a lot of improvements that I've made, and we'll get the rest sorted out. Other than that, just a quick update on revenues. I think last meeting I reported May was going to be down, but we still had some late payers. May ended up for TOT down 5.4%, but on a positive note, cross-channel in May was up 10 and 1/2%, and nightly mornings were up 18%. It's kind of a mixed bag in May, and too early, early to know what June looks like, but good weather. Hopefully, we had full hotels, so.
Perfect. Questions? No, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to provide a brief update on the Pebbly Beach landfill extension project. We're very close with submitting our first application for review with LA County Regional Planning, so that's super exciting. By the end of next week, we should have that documentation submitted. And then at next city council meeting, I'll be doing a presentation on some animal code revisions, so if there's anybody that's hearing me right now and wants to provide feedback on, on our animal code, I'm more than willing to meet with you and talk with you. My email is jfrances@cityofavalon.com. Frances is with an I. And the IT manager position recruitment is still open. It closes on July 26th. Again, use that same email to send in your application, your cover letter, and five references to be considered for the position. And then at the next city council meeting on August 6th, I'll be presenting and recommending a vendor for the class and compensation study.
Oh, okay. Great. Any questions? No, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Robuffo for planning. Just wanted to quickly give you guys a kind of a heads-up on the items that we'll have at our planning commission, regular planning commission meeting tomorrow. There are two items that are going to be on the agenda for public hearing. One will be the review of the wireless facilities ordinance update that I kind of let you know was kind of coming forward a couple of months ago, so planning will be reviewing that to provide recommendation to council for your review, depending on how the meeting goes last night. You may say that as early as the end of next month. So that is going to be as a kind of a summary, that is, the ordinance for private, regulations for private property. So currently, the city has public right-of-way wireless regulations that you adopted in 2019, but we have not updated the wireless and antenna section for private property since 1997. So obviously, a lot has changed in the world of wireless and cellular facilities since that time, so we're going to get up-to-date on our code. The other item that's on the agenda tomorrow night is also Catalina Island Horseback Adventures. So that is an application for setting up a new horse stables facility at the old Catalina Stables Facility here on Avalon Canyon Road. So that will be going for a conditional use permit, site plan review, and coastal development permit. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple updates and some projects we have. Five Corners Project is on the street. As you know, closing day, I believe, is September 4th. Those proposals are receiving proposals on that, so that's exciting. Hopefully, we'll be able to engage somebody in September. Crescent Hillside project is ongoing. Obviously, slowed down a week, July 4th, maybe we have some time off, but we're getting back at it. Hopefully, a few more weeks left in that project, and we'll get that included, but while it's going a little longer.
Longer, everything's going as expected. They're doing a great job.
We have extreme professionals up there on that hillside working on that project. Jackie already mentioned the new flag pole. If you have a chance, if you haven't seen it, get out there and take a look. We're hoping we'll be able to get something out to council, and they're going to first raise all the new flags on that pole, hopefully maybe this weekend, beginning of next week. I thank Kevin Schmidt and our maintenance group for all the work they did getting that pole.
Event. Foam-making machine, and lots of kids, and hula hoops, and all that, so please try to get down there. The, let's see, Jack, you already mentioned new staffing. I just want to mention that I had a meeting with a resident last week regarding sidewalk vending ordinance. I know it's been brought to council's attention through email or direct correspondence. I indicated to that resident when we met that I would bring it up in my comments tonight, that the way the ordinance is currently written, it's our intention as a city and a code enforcement to enforce is what we have on the books. If it's council's prerogative to make any changes to that, we certainly will respond to whatever council's directive is in that regard, either bringing proposals or options to you. I've had conversations with Scott Campbell in this regard, so just wanted to bring that to, you know, I represented the resident, and I'll do that, so I did, I'm doing that now, and I know he's in the audience, so maybe he'll speak later. And then finally, just again, want to thank, like everybody else, everybody and our team for what they did on Fourth of July, particularly Dave Hart and his crew. They were out there all, all day in leading up to that outstanding job, making sure everybody had a great time, and I think, I think they pulled it off. It was great, so thanks to them.
Excellent. Thank you. City Attorney, Scott?
Yes, several things. First, I also had a conversation with a resident regarding the sidewalk ordinance, and suggested that if they wanted to have it amended, that the best way is to approach the council during public comment, and, and, and address that, and I believe that's going to happen tonight, so that's number one. Number two is, every year during the summer, we have summer associates who are law students at various law schools around the country, and I invite them to attend council meetings. Well, the rest of the firm got that idea, and so they're all attending different council meetings tonight, but Irene Lee, who is a second year at UC Irvine, won the lottery, and she is attending the Avalon meeting tonight, so she'll be observing this and then confronting with the other summer associates about how the various different councils have their meetings. And then lastly, I will be in the city for the August 6th meeting, and so I'll be arriving around 12, and so if there's any office hours, we'll have that in the afternoon, if you have anything you'd like to discuss. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Irene, do you want to say hi to the council?
Where is she?
Oh, she's on, she's on the video. She's watching, though.
Hello, Irene.
Okay. All righty. Councilmember reports.
I don't have much. Well, I have a lot going on, but it's stuff that I've already mentioned the past couple meetings, so just still working on that. One of the things that we're looking to finalize is the date for the resource fair, so we're looking at October 24th. So far, that is the date, and if anything does change, I'll make sure to mention that. Oh, and then also, there is another school workshop this Thursday at 5:30 at the cafeteria, so I'll see you there.
We had somebody who came in and spoke in regards to circuit and the cabs. I would just like to say that I've gotten nothing but positives from people who think we're doing a great job with the circuit, so I just wanted to throw that out there. I actually got stopped after mass on Saturday, that, and he said, "Can I talk to you?" And I'm like, "Oh, no." But he just wanted to say that, no. They're, they're dealing, and other people that they know that have dealt with it think it's great, so. So it's a positive. And then, now I'm going to do a negative. I'm going to bash Edison a little. Edison's service has really kind of sucked this summer with the power outages they've had, and the fact that they don't tell you, they don't notify the community what's going on. All they had to do was get on, somebody get on Facebook and said, "We had a fire, the power went out." A month ago, when it was out for hours, they could have somehow notified the community as to what was going on, and it just drives me crazy that we have power go out and nobody knows why it's gone out. There's no notice of why it's gone out. And then the other thing is that they sent their little water thing, and it, it, it just went to the P.O. box, you know. It, it should have went to the, I don't know, I'm just not real happy with them right now, so it's just, but it just drives me crazy that their power, and their power has gone out a lot lately. It's damaging electronic equipment in people's homes, TVs, refrigerators, and they don't take responsibility that it's their fault that they have to replace it. So, but I just wanted to throw that out there, because they never let you know what happened. Just let us know why the power went out. It's not like they can't notify us.
Do you get notifications about that?
Not unless we ask and push, and by the time we do and try to get some details as far as when it's going to be back on, I mean, we're, we're well into it, and we've tried to get them to, same thing, to push that out themselves rather than go through us.
All right, okay.
Because usually it's after, or often, it's after hours.
After hour, it's in the middle of the night. You know, it, so.
As far as the water, we've asked or are going to ask for them to come in front of council, correct?
We've had that conversation with Edison about coming before council and addressing what everybody got in their mailbox regarding the water, so hopefully, within the next two council meetings, they'll be able to get out here. Yes.
And my thing with the, with the way it was sent is that most people just saw, "Oh, it's from Edison." I'm going to throw it away.
Right.
Did they, did they, you know, how many people actually opened it to see what was inside? Granted, what's inside is not the best news, but it's past history, and they're just notifying us that this is what had happened and that it's not happening anymore. But just the fact that they sent it the way they sent it, it just, yeah. Okay, I'm off myself. Box.
That's good. I mean, you stay on it longer if you'd like, because we don't have two other council people to talk, so we're good. Well, if you go into the lobby of City Hall, you'll see some artwork up there. It's going to be there for a while, from Kimberly Stanley, an artist that has lived here before, and now she's back again, and she lives in Tennessee when she's not here, but she's got some lovely pieces. And I know, we're talking now about maybe doing a program where we can have other artists submit their stuff, and we can, you know, display it here at City Hall and start a little art project, or, so anyway, so go take a look at it. Lovely, lovely stuff that she does. I'll be going to the chamber installation on Thursday, but going to hit up the school before I go, go to the school before that, and that's it. Okay. Oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Hello, Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Just get me the hook if I go over two minutes. I want to be a good citizen, very polite. Coming up, I want to first start on our virtual programs, which we still have some really excellent programs at lacountylibrary.org, and then find the virtual programs. We're going to have an author talk with the children's artist, Dan Santat. He's going to teach how to tell your own story with a graphic novel, which I think is going to be an awesome program. On Thursday, July 25th, we're going to have a lecture with the people who run the Roundhouse Aquarium about ecosystems. That's going to be Thursday, July 25th, at 4:00 p.m. online. And then on Thursday, July 30th, our work-ready virtual online series on How to Dare to Get a Job, about job practices and applying for jobs and making a good first impression. That's going to be Thursday, July 30th at 11:00. I'm thinking I might set up a laptop in the middle of the library and just stream it, so anybody who can come by can see it, because I know virtual programs are a little squiffy on, on, here on the island. I just want to call your attention that every Saturday at 11:00, we are still doing Smarty Pants Storytime. Very popular, but it's, you know, there are a lot of things vying for your attention on Saturday morning, but I just want you folks to remember, books and stuff, 11 o'clock on Saturday, then you go do the art at 11:30. It's the perfect men's sauna, corporate sauna day. Sound mind, sound body. Come and see us at Smarty Pants Storytime. We are going to have Haynes Marionettes coming up in August. That's going to be our performer. Just last Thursday, we had a terrific magician. We had Billy Bonkers, and he did such a fun show. We had about 50 kids. It was really, really swell. And then this Thursday, I'm going to throw a little ice cream party in honor of the summer discovery program. Uh-oh. Okay.
Is that the new two minute?
Very good. Well, I like that. Very good. Thank you very much. I'm going to be a good citizen. Thank you.
What the hell is that?
That's like the Academy Awards.
Well, we tried the new system out on you, Paul.
Music plays you on.
Hello, hello. Dear Count, dear Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to ask you to review and amend the street vending ordinance that was passed in 2019, Avalon Municipal Code, Chapter 5-21, Sidewalk Vending. After talking with the city manager and attorney, I still believe it may be time we review our current ordinance and ensure it aligns with Senate Bill 946. Senate Bill 946 was created to decriminalize street vending and ensure fair regulations don't get placed, don't place undue burdens on vendors. Unfortunately, our current ordinance imposes restrictions that are more stringent than state law allows. Specifically, the prohibition of vending on Crescent Avenue and the cap on the number of vendor permits lack clear, objective justifications related to public health, safety, or welfare. The only way a city can restrict where a vendor sets up is if it poses a direct risk to public health, safety, or welfare. It is hard to believe that there are no locations on Crescent Avenue where a street vendor could set up without impeding pedestrian traffic or emergency vehicles. By maintaining these overly restrictive regulations, we are not only causing economic hardship for street vendors, but also going against the spirit and the intent of state legislation designed to promote economic equality. I provided you detailed information and proposed changes to the local ordinance that would make it more consistent with state law. These changes include reevaluating location restrictions, adjusting permit caps, and streamlining the permit process. Amending the current ordinance will not only comply with state law, but also support the economic stability of street vendors, enhance the local economy, and contribute to a more inclusive and vibrant community. By not amending the ordinance, we are contributing to the economic hardship placed on street vendors and directly opposing the intent of state legislation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I urge you to take action and ensure that our local regulation reflect the intent and spirit of state legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel.
Okay, if I approach?
Yes. And he might talk more than two minutes, I kinda said it was okay. Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, you've never had one like this. Good evening, my name is Charles Keller and I'm accompanied by my wife Ellen. Our main residence is in Paradise Valley, Arizona. Probably be much more interested in Ellen because she actually serves on the town council in our little community of about 10,000 souls just north of Phoenix. I've been boating Catalina for many years, and then Ellen and I both fell in love on and with Catalina Island. And we wanted to come down and say hello because we're now residents, and we just love this little part of the world. For us, it truly is the island of romance. Um, while I was looking for uh, real estate, I actually took a break one day and went over to the Riggly Museum and visited the Cabinet of Curiosities exhibit. While I was there, I loved all of it, but the last one told me that President Richard Nixon visited the island in two stays in 1971, and I love American history. I'm especially enthralled with the American presidency. So I couldn't wait to uh, dig into it. Uh, working with the Nixon Library and the National Archives, I looked up the second trip in 71, which is not all that interesting because he left on a boat called Mojo out of Newport Beach, circumnavigated the island, stepped a foot on land, but there are no photographs of it. However, the trip of January 8th, 1971 is an altogether different story. The president accompanied by his daughter Tricia enjoyed an action-packed three hours on the island, and there are two entire rolls of film to chronicle that stay. In room, uh, on roll 5440, the entourage mixed with islanders, they, as they wandered down Catalina Avenue, and in the second one, they go out to Pebly Beach where he eventually leaves on the helicopter, but he also meets with city officials, citizens, and even two LA County Sheriff's officers. Um, all the photographs can be found in the thumb drives that I've given you just now, but my work is not done. I hope to interview Tricia Nixon Cox, his daughter, and try to learn more about what brought them here to the island. I know people. Uh, what drove me to do all this work? Well, the pictures of the president are great, but what I truly loved was looking at the faces of the crowd, only a few of which I could identify. The seven, the, the kids that were seven years old when the snapshots were taken were as old as I am, so that means they're now between about 60 and 70 years old. And what I hope to do with this project is show it to a lot of people on Avalon and see if I can reunite people with their pictures of that moment in history. Um, before I exit states left, I wanted to give you your one other gift. Um, included in what you have are pictures of a presidential aircraft. You would think of it as Air Force One, but in the biz, this is called SAM 26,000. It's identified by its tail number. Now, this uh, plane served eight different presidents, but it is best known and will always be thought of, of the plane as the plane of John F. Kennedy, as it took him to Dallas and then dutifully returned President Johnson to Washington on that very sad day in 1963, but this is the picture of it flying over Avalon. And we have the, I have the, all the shots of that photo shoot. And then finally, I wanted to share with you what I thought was the single greatest photograph. As the president and all those around him are wandering down Catalina, Richard M. Nixon, 37th President of the United States, wanders in front of the Marlin Club. How was that? So, all the stuff I have, this is just a subset of it, but all that's going to the Riggly Museum uh, tomorrow, and uh, our contact information is there. We'd love to get, uh, to know all of you, and if you have any questions or we can be of any help, let us know.
So, so when you talk about trying to find people, so if I go, you know, there's a group of elders that kinda meet here and there, I should probably take these pictures to see if they can recognize anybody?
Well, so, you, you know, I'd love to hear the stories myself, but it's not essential that I do. On the thumb drive, is it, you'll see a number at the bottom of each photograph, and when you open up the thumb drive, I only gave you two of the eight files I made. So one is the two rolls of film, so it'll say like 5440-5 on the bottom of your picture, and you'll find the corresponding photograph.
Okay.
And you've got it, and you can give it to somebody, they can reprint it. All these are in the public domain because they came from the National Archives, so there's no copyright infringement or anything like that. People can blow them up. I think I'm gonna take the Marlin Club one and put it on t-shirts and just give them away as party gifts. And by the way, one has been dropped off at the Marlin Club and they plan to proudly display it.
Oh, that's wonderful, well, that's a lot of work.
I, I enjoyed every minute of it.
They're just smiling from ear to ear.
That is cool.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Gosh, very nice. Uh-oh, now this librarian's gonna hit you up. Okay, are, is there any?
Yes, hi, so, Ward, Mayor, hello, Mayor, so, uh, my name is Jesse Truhill, um, I'm, I also go by the name of the Sand Architect. Um, for the many years, yeah, hi, um, I've been investigating Catalina for, for a good 10 years now. Um, started off in Two Harborside and uh, eventually came down here to Avalon. What I've been trying to do is uh, pursue or, and push like coaching for sand sculpting. That's one of the items that I do wanna propose at some point, maybe have it as a proposal for the summer events, maybe for next year or something. Um, but I do, I do have been testing out different locations on the beach side to understand like, um, how far I could dig, or, or the type of sand, because there are different qualities of sand in different beaches. Um, not all the time, all the, along the shoreline, it brings up sand, so sometimes it's variance, but I have used that sand as well. Um, while investigating, I also heard that in the past, there have been uh, like sand sculpting, I've heard contests with, I guess, family members of the community, as well as um, uh, there was a few like flying fish, uh, big displays uh, by the master sculptors. I, I'm trying to get to that point where I can call myself a master. I'm, I don't have all my tools, materials, I, I don't have a storage facility yet, I'm trying to figure it all out. As well as uh, and where I'm not sure of, like with the beach side, uh, where, where I could possibly have some items, freezers, bring in, uh, and make the ice. Um, and uh, yeah, um, there's a number of things I do wanna present, uh, eventually, uh, one dealing with conservancy, and maybe like the wood, uh, tree stumps that are along the highway. I don't know, I, I, I feel like they could be used just a little livening it up, but I don't know how original they wanted to keep it.
Right.
But uh, I'm willing to take a chainsaw at, at the log with the design, and we can all, you know, uh, get approval on a design.
Right.
For certain tree stumps.
So needless to say, you're an artist.
Oh, yes, uh, yeah, yeah, that's one of my skills, I guess.
And have you met with Dave Hart?
Uh, I have spoken, um, it's been a year and a half ago that I presented it to him, and, and so it's just, um, yeah, it's in, the last year, so I ended up getting it around May 3rd, it was my birthday, May 3rd, uh, I was, I received a letter from the city saying I was approved to go ahead and do some sculptures along the beach side, so.
Okay.
Uh, I have lost that computer and the whole email, so I'm trying to find it again, so I can, or hopefully when, uh, I'm trying to figure out like the permit-wise, um, maybe if I could have the sand for three days.
So then really quick, what is his best direction to take?
Uh, meet with the city, I mean, Dave Hart and I can meet with him, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, and you have his, you have our, well, you know how to reach City Hall, and that's Dave, and that's Dave, we got two Daves.
Okay, oh, yes.
City Manager and Maestro Sennhart, so.
Yes, yeah, so, but uh, also, so I just wanted to also end with, uh, thank you for last year, I don't know who was on the, the, in the chair, um, on the board at the moment, but um, thank you for the approval then, last year, and maybe I could get a little bit more in tune and make
Okay.
Things really happen on a larger scale with low, uh, forums being used and
Excellent.
And some overnight maybe, uh, protectors or something, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll be back.
That's who you should talk to.
Okay, alright, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Uh-huh, anybody else on oral? No, we consent calendar.
Okay, for the consent calendar, item one is approval of the minutes from the June 18th, 2024 regular city council meeting. Item two, warrants, approval total expenditures for June 24th, 2024 through July 5th, 2024 totaling $1,084,283.22. Item three, an ordinance amending Chapter 4-4 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding curb markings and adoption of exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act. Item four, request or proposals for a local hazard mitigation plan. Item five, grant funding application in California Division of Boating and Waterways, asking council to adopt a resolution authorizing the application of grant funds from California Division of Boat and Waterway Infrastructure Grant and authorize the city manager or designated to be authorized signature on the grant application.
Council, do you any, wanna discuss anything? Nope, is there a motion?
I'm in commotion to approve items one through five.
I'll second.
Off of the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot our system, waiting for you to go, Mayor Marshall.
Three ayes, two absent, Councilmember Schickling, Mayor Protem Lavelle.
Okay, item number six.
Item number six is a public hearing. Uh, this is an appeal of a commercial autowet approval, uh, condition for all electric vehicles. Uh, at this time, we ask council to open the public hearing, receive, receive public comment, close the public hearing, consider that, and's appeal to determine either to uphold the decision of the hearing officer or overturn the decision of the hearing officer. At first, I would like to defer and refer to Scott Campbell, city attorney, uh, for some preliminary comments on this matter.
Yes, council, if I could, uh, one of the issues and really the, the sole issue here is that the hearing officer thought that he was bound by the ordinance's uh, language that said that all new commercial vehicles must be electric. Um, there is some, um, there's some ambiguity in whether he had the current ordinance that was adopted or the draft of the ordinance, and so you're governed on the appeal by the ordinance that was adopted. That ordinance provides as follows, that effective January 1st, 2024, all purchase or lease agreements for new commercial autowets must be certified for electric vehicles. So, under the appellate's interpretation of that, because this is not a purchase of a new autowet, um, they believe that, uh, that they do not need to have it be electric. Um, all other requirements of the municipal code for a commercial autowet are satisfied, and so it's up to the council to determine, um, whether when it adopted the ordinance requiring, um, new commercial autowets, uh, did that just include the purchase of new vehicles or leases of new vehicles that were brought onto the island? Um, or did it require if there's an existing autowet and someone satisfies all other conditions for it, and will not bringing a new, will not be bringing a new autowet, whether they can continue to use the gas one until that dies out, then when they have a new vehicle, it has to be autowet. So that's the issue before you have to answer any questions on the interpretation, but it is, really goes to your intent as to what you intended when you adopted the ordinance and whether it was that it only applied to new vehicles brought to the island via lease or purchase, or whether it applied to all businesses when they're opening up, um, a new business and need an autowet, even if it's an existing, uh, autowet.
Do we have to revisit this ordinance?
Well, I, I think what Scott's asking is that your intent might resolve the appeal in and of itself.
I think our intent was all new vehicles coming to the island. I don't think it was just businesses that would be starting and being able to use a gas-powered golf cart that was already here.
Right.
We didn't want them bringing new vehicles.
Gas.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that was what, or, or that's how I felt I was voting for, in that.
And I, I would, I would, and again, not, not leading the, the council, but that's my recollection, it was concern about people who have purchased vehicles, um, you can go ahead and, and continue to use them, but there's a certain, you know, deadline for the purchase of new vehicles or leasing, it's gotta be electric. If that's in fact your intent, then what you can do is you can just grant the appeal, um, and since all other conditions in the uh, ordinance are met, then, then she gets her autowet permit.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would just comment, I mean, I understand what Scott's saying, but I think, you know, to this point, and we might have to revisit this internally, to this point, I think, uh, from the city's standpoint, we were looking at the word "new" as applying to a new commercial sticker for an autowet versus the new vehicle. So I'm not sure, whatever council's intention is, we might have to go back and revisit some other actions, uh, that the city has previously taken regarding this issue.
That's what I was wondering, if we had to revisit the ordinance in general, so we don't come across these problems again, to make it clear?
And we can clarify it.
Yeah, and I would have no problem coming back to it to clear it up if there is an issue, but to be honest, I, my intent was always, anything new coming to the island would have to be electric.
And I just wanna make sure that we've consistently applied that
Yeah.
Up to this point, I'm not sure we have, so we would have to go back and potentially revisit some decisions.
But does that mean we couldn't? Hopefully doesn't mean we couldn't, we can still take action this evening.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so, I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is the time to receive public comment, if anybody wants to talk on this. Well, Gabriel is in the back of the room and not saying anything, so.
I think I come on after the public hearing is closed, correct?
No, you, you would talk now.
Remember the usual advice, when, especially when I'm a courtist, if it appears you're winning, say thank you and move on.
Good advice.
Yes, uh, thank you, Scott, and hello, council, yep, uh, my name's of course, Gabriel Soldana, owner and technician at Soldana Communications, and through my appeal, that was basically just it, is trying to put it in the council's decision in their ballfield as far as the ruling of this. Uh, just because when I talked to the hearing officer, that's what he said, is he goes, well, it's a new ordinance, I'm not sure, so I'm going to say that it has to be electric, but you can ask the council, because he doesn't wanna go against what, what you thought. So, again, um, as the city manager and, and attorney said, it's kind of up to you at this point, but it sounds like a lot of you have, um, kinda seen the wording of this, and then, you know, it may, just kind of makes sense that a vehicle that's already been on the island, it's been here a part of the fleet for about 15 years or more, and also it would just help business starting out that you wouldn't have to purchase a new vehicle. And the alternative situation to that would be buying a new vehicle, shipping it to the island, selling the current one to someone who can use it, so that would just be adding a new vehicle to the island, as well as a lot of other things. And I think Councilmember Schickling's provided an email to you that I had sent to her that she'd requested for more information on this, so.
Okay.
I do have some of that information, which basically gives a lot of my, um, information to you in argument towards the, towards the matter. Any questions for me?
Thank you, no questions of me, you're good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Uh-huh, any other public comment? Close the public hearing, council?
Okay, so, I wanna make sure we do this right, so what is the right wording if we wanna approve Gabriel? So is it approve, uphold the appeal?
Overturn the decision.
Overturn the appeal.
Grant the appeal?
I, we can't hear you, Scott, you're mute.
Sorry, he would grant his appeal and, and direct the staff to issue an autowet permit.
So how do I, what motion do I grant the appeal, and?
I would be a motion to grant the appeal and allow him to use his existing vehicle as a commercial autowet.
Overturn the decision of the vehicle.
I make that motion.
That's been, okay.
I second it.
Okay, call for the vote.
New habit.
Three ayes, two absent, uh, Mayor Protem Sch- uh, Lavelle, Councilmember Schickling.
Thank you, thank you. You're good to go, or you can stick around, Gabe, that's no problem, but, okay. Item number seven.
General business, item number seven, we have a planning commission appointment. As council recalls, uh, just last month, on June 18th, you appointed, uh, new council member, or a new planning commission members. One of those members has already informed the city that she would be unable to accept the appointment, so therefore the So therefore, the request is to consider the recommendation of Mayor Marshall to appoint Sean Sterling, who was the alternate as the new planning commission member with a four-year term expiring June 30th, 2028.
And yeah, on the first, on the recommended, it said expiring June 30th, 2026, so that should read the 28th? The four-year term?
Does 2028?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it would be 2028.
But here it says 28.
It says.
On the staff report, your car.
Okay, all right. All right. That's your pleasure, council?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Sean Sterling as planning commissioner for a term expiring June 30th, 2028.
Is there a second?
I am going to second. I just want to make sure that, and I'm going to have my own conversation as well with Sean. Growing up here, you know, you know everybody on your own personal level, and I'm excited. We, we always want the community to get involved, and I'm so proud of him and wanted to get involved. I know that I had people come up to me with either support or concerns, which were valid, you know, but I do feel that he has his heart in the right place and he has the brain for it, and so the support is there on my end, but also just would like to remind him how serious this is in many aspects. But excited for him to, you know, do the work and start, see what it's like to work in the city.
Yes. Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Three ayes, two absent. Councilmember Schickling, Mayor Protem Lovell.
Excellent. Item number eight.
Okay, item number eight is request to purchase a 2024 VidaSeal electric boat for the harbor department. We'd be asking council to make it affirmative finding that VidaPower is the sole source provider of commercial harbor craft vessels approved by the Clean Off-Road Equipment Core voucher incentive program, which we have received, and to authorize the city manager or his designated to procure a new VidaSeal electric boat per the city's procurement process.
Excellent. That's that fun little craft we took a ride in, right?
Last year, yes.
Yeah. And what's the delivery time?
September.
Oh, so, okay, cool. All right. So, action?
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding that the VidaPower is the sole source provider of a commercial harbor craft vessel approved by the Clean Off-Road Equipment Core voucher incentive program, and to authorize the city manager or his designated to procure a new VidaSeal electric boat per the city's procurement process.
I'll second.
Who didn't second it? Call for the vote.
Three ayes, two absent. Councilmember Schickling, Mayor Protem Lovell.
This is fun.
Item number nine is the law enforcement services agreement with Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Currently, the city has historically engaged and contracted with Los Angeles County for law enforcement services. That five-year agreement expired June 30th. Much negotiation went on between a number of different contract cities and LA County to lead to this agreement. This agreement was forwarded to us by the county supervisors on June 25th, so we were able, just able to get it in front of council now. So we are, at this point, recommending that council adopt a resolution notifying Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors of the city's desire to approve the five-year agreement and receive law enforcement services from LA County Sheriff's Department, authorizing expenditure of the COPS grant funds, and authorize the city manager to execute the city council municipal law enforcement service agreement for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029.
Any comments? Call for the vote? Is there a motion? So we can call for the vote?
I just wanted to say, I think the contract looks really good, fair, so I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the things that also with the conversation that I had with Dave was being able to maybe set goals on what we'd like to see as a community and just keeping that open communication because they've always been doing so well with having those workshops and the community feels more involved and there's so much more trust already, so just keeping that going. I'm excited to see that.
Motion and your second?
I'll second, yes.
Okay. And let's call for the vote.
Three ayes, two absent. Councilmember Schickling, Mayor Protem Lovell.
Okay. And we now will be going into a closed session?
We have a closed session. Real property negotiations, discuss property, APN number 748-0021006.
You shall return, but I think you'll probably be gone by then. You shall return, but I think you could probably be gone by then.